We now call this a regular workshop meeting. The Jacksonville City Council is ordered. You have a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. And we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this time.
So moved.
A second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have adoption of the minutes from October 17th, 2023, regular meeting. And we have five consent items.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, motion is second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Our first non-consent item of the night is auditor's report of the city's financial report, FY23.
Mayor, you do have a copy of the audit in front of you. And so we have Leanne Bagasala with Malden Jenkins here tonight. Very excited to have the audit process completed. Can't tell you what she's gonna say, so I'm a little... I'm excited about the presentation.
We gotta read all this?
Yes.
All 300 plus pages.
So we're excited, Mayor, just because this gives us the opportunity. It's hard. We never would want council to start thinking about the next fiscal year until we close out this fiscal year. So, once Leanne gets going today, that gives us the ability to close out a chapter as long as she says we get to, and then start to the next one. So, here.
Thank you. So, like he was saying, my name is Leanne Bagasala. I'm Audit Director at Malden Jenkins. This is our second year on the audit. So, I previously worked a little bit on the audit at your prior firm that you had. But this is my first time actually signing your audit opinion. So, I was gonna go through a couple things today. I'm gonna go through who your engagement team is. I'm gonna go through your audit opinions. There are several of them. And then go through some required communications, things I have to communicate to you. Sometimes you get that in the form of a letter, but we prefer to tell you and show you so that you see it a little bit more. But at any time during the presentation, if you have questions, please feel free to interrupt.
If we are called to testify, like certain individuals have been recently on their financial position, we can't just say that the auditor, that's what the auditor told us or anything.
And you'll see that disclosed in this slide. You cannot call him in. My audit opinion does not go past your report.
I was gonna say that anyway, was the option.
Yeah.
So, we can't say the auditor told us that's where our financial position is.
So, this is just a graphic slide that kinda gives you an idea of who Malden Jenkins are. We've been in business for over 100 years. A third of our practice is governmental. So, we have a lot of governmental partners, as you see here. We have 16. I'm hoping to make 17 this year. We're in six states. We have 13 offices. Our most recently new office is the Raleigh, North Carolina office. We opened in October of 2022. We've been in the North Carolina since 2015 doing business, but actually have a physical location now. So, on your engagement team, I served as your engagement director. Tim Lyons served as your quality review partner. Every audit that we have has a second partner that goes through and makes sure, as I dotted my i's and crossed my t's, just looking after... They're independent of the audit. They are not involved in the audit until the very end. So, they're taking a very clean, clean, fresh look at it. And then Jack Woods served as your engagement senior. We had several other staff and seniors that helped out throughout the engagement. And so, this first slide that you have here, this is your first audit opinion. And this is on page 28 of your financial statements. Basically, it tells you that we perform our audit. And when we perform our audit, we consider the internal control structure of the city. And we express an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. But our opinion is not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness of your internal controls. Our audit is performed in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles of the United States and also government auditing standards. And our objective is to provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, that your financial statements are free of material misstatements. Overall, though, your financial statements are the responsibility of management. In our audit report, we gave an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. We're basically saying that, in our opinion, your financial statements do present fairly with the standards. But our responsibility does not extend beyond your financial statements in front of you. Sorry.
So, it's all on you, Josh.
We also audit and issue a separate report for the Jacksonville TDA. That report was dated October 2nd, 2023, and it's included in your financial statements. Just to kinda give you an overview from the government as a whole for fiscal year 2023 compared to fiscal year 2022, your net position, that's the total government, increased $15.7 million. Within your MDNA, which is your management discussion and analysis, in the front of your financial statements, it kinda goes through a lot of information of why did those numbers increase this year? So, your investment in capital assets is one of the biggest numbers that you see. As the city keeps obtaining more and more assets, or more and more debt, or paying down more and more debt, this number's gonna continue to fluctuate every year based on what's going on. The required state statute is a calculation that we have to do in accordance with GS-159. And then also, you have some restrictions for other public works, public safety, and economic development. And then after all of that is calculated, your unrestricted position is calculated. And this year, it did increase $1.2 million. And that's for various reasons. But this kinda gives you an overview of what the net position was at the end of the fiscal year. And I know later in your meeting, you're gonna kinda talk a little bit about adopting a fund policy for the general fund. That's a very good idea. I mean, I think that, you know, every local government should have a fund balance policy, you know, and making sure that if you have the money to pay your expenditures going forward for the year for a certain amount, I think the way that your fund policy reads is three months, to make sure you have at least three months of funding to cover your general fund expenditures. And then if you get too much unassigned fund balance, having the ability to spend down some of that stuff on different projects. So, that's the financial statements as a glimpse. Like I said, there are a lot of disclosures within your financial statements. If you wanna get more analysis on kinda how numbers change and why they change, that's in your management discussion and analysis. So, we issued a couple other reports or three other opinions. They start on page 376 of your financial statements. The first one is a government auditing standards opinion, or usually referred to a yellow book opinion. And that is where we test the city's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulation. The report isn't intended to provide an opinion on the internal controls, nor is it to provide a legal determination of the city's compliance. But that report is required in accordance with government auditing standards, and that was a clean audit opinion. We didn't have any or did not find any issues as a part of that process of that review. And then there are two other opinions. During the audit, we do test single audits or grants. So, we perform a single audit over federal programs as well as state programs. The federal program that we audited this year is the Federal Transit Grants, one of the largest grants that you have. And then we also audited two state programs. One is Powellville. It's one of the biggest state programs you have. And then you also had some funding this year for the fire station that was state grant-funded. So, we did an audit over those two, and we issued two separate opinions. One is over compliance with federal programs in accordance with the Uniform Grant Guidance. And then one is for the city programs in accordance with the State of North Carolina Single Audit Implementation Act. And both of those audits were clean opinions. We didn't find any significant deficiencies or material weakness for those grants that we audited. So, altogether, you got four audit opinions, and they were clean audit opinions. Now, I was gonna go over to some of the required communications. This is a couple slides long, but these are given to you in this format, so we have them printed. If you wanna read through word for word for what they said, I'm gonna summarize them a little bit. So, the first thing that we wanted to mention is that you do have a lot of significant accounting policies that management has selected and make sure that they're properly using accounting principles. The policies of the city are described in Note 1 of the Basic Financial Statements, which is on page 63. During the year, though, every year, we have to work on GASB implementations. And this year, we had to implement GASB standard 96. It is called subscription-based IT arrangements, or for short, SUBITUS. And we implemented that year. Basically, it's taking any IT arrangement that you have that's long-term, meaning it's greater than one year, we have to go through and actually record a liability and an asset on your books. And so, we did that this year. And that impact, from a liability perspective, was almost $800,000. And the assets was about the same after you consider amortization. So, that was a big impact to the statements this year and implementation. And every single year, we'll have to continue to say, if you engage in any more IT contracts, we'll have to keep adding to those numbers, but hopefully, they start to go down. And when you actually look at, this standard is adding an asset and a liability to your books, and they almost net to zero. So, they don't really have too much impact, but that's the standard. It requires us to report it if we think it's material. So, that was implemented this year without any problems. But overall, the policies that the city has, we believe that they are in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. There's nothing controversial out there that the city's doing that we don't agree with. Also, in your financial statements, there are judgments made by management and estimates made by management, and those are integral part of your financial statements. When you think about estimates, you're thinking about depreciation. How, what's the useful life of equipment? And there's also a couple liabilities that are actuary determines. So, your OPEB and your pension liability, those are actuary determining. Those are estimates that are in your financial statements. Also, from a required communication standpoint, I have to let you know that we received full cooperation from city management and staff. We had no disagreements as part of the audit. We worked through anything that, you know, we needed to talk about logistically. As part of the audit, management did have to sign what's called a management ref letter, where they basically say in written form that I agreed to X, Y, and Z, and it's about 40 that they agreed to. That's required in any audit, though. From a consultation perspective, we are not aware that the city engaged any other auditors during the audit, and we didn't discuss any significant issues with management. There were two pass audit adjustments as part of the audit that we determined to be immaterial. So, what this means is when we received your trial balance or your general ledger, we found a couple entries that could be posted to your books and records to make things true and 100% accurate. However, we decided that they were immaterial, so we just didn't book those. One is related to compensated absences. That's the liability that you book on your financial statements to pay for like sick leave and stuff like that. It was overstated a little bit. And it's better to be in the overstated position as opposed to the understated position, so we just passed on cleaning that up. However, management cleaned it up this year. So, the pass audit adjustment we have is to fix it from last year. But it was cleaned up for this year, and going forward, it'll be cleaned up, so we should have no issues. And then, last year, we had to implement the standard GASB 87, and we determined that to be immaterial. So, every single year, you will see a pass audit adjustment for GASB 87, but we decided not to report it on your financial statements because it's immaterial. So, we'll just keep going down. If eventually goes up, that's because y'all got into more leases, and they are not short-term. And then, as far as the financial statement disclosures, you have a very thick financial statements that has a lot of disclosures in that. We review all disclosures, make sure that they are clear, accurate, and consistent to the best of our knowledge. But there's a lot of information in there. And then the last thing I have to communicate to you is just making sure that you realize that Malden Jenkins is independent of the city and the TDA. So, when we were issuing you and we're doing your audit, we are independent of the Finance Department. So, that's the summary of what I have to communicate to you. There are several offerings that we have at Malden Jenkins for other things that we can still do as your auditors that do maintain our independence. And some of those things are listed here. This is one of the same slides I presented last year, just some extra things that we can do if that is something that you're interested in. There are two pronouncements that are coming down, the pipeline that could possibly be applicable to the city at some point. One comes out, it's GASB Statement 100, related to accounting changes, an error correction that's only applicable if it happens. And then compensated absences, there are redo and how that's calculated, too. So, that comes out in a couple years. And then there's a lot of projects going on at the GASB, and I swear this is the exact same slide as last year, because it takes a very, very long time to get these projects out and working. And so, three things are coming down the pipeline, but we never know when they're coming out and, you know, what the true impact of those are at this time. And then, as part of an extra service that we provide to our clients, we do allow for free quarterly continuing education. We do that at least quarterly, and we do two days every quarter. So, it's a lot of extra continuing education that, you know, the finance team or whoever that needs CPEs can attend those. They get notified. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
When will we be presenting TDA's audit?
I think it's at the end of the month.
Last Thursday of this month.
30th.
30th in November.
So, we're good.
Very good, yeah. And we submitted to the Local Government Commission already, and they've already accepted the audit opinion. So, that's really good that they've already accepted before I presented to you. They're actually doing pretty fast this year. The only thing that, you know, moving forward that we as your audit firms still have to do is there is a data collection form that's required to be submitted to state that goes through your grants and how much funding you have and all that stuff, is due 30 days after issuance. So, we're working on getting that submitted timely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah. No problem. Thank you.
Very thorough and great job.
Would be appropriate, Mayor, from the council to somebody to make a motion to accept the audit for 2023 as presented.
So moved.
Second, a motion and a second, any further discussion on this matter? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have item number seven, and this is a discussion on the Fire Department's self-contained breathing apparatus replacement.
Mayor, after the last item where we talked about when we receive the audit, that allows us to start next year's budget. Well, first up, Chief Tomlin is first up, so...
Come and knock us down.
Well, we knew it.
First in line.
We knew it was coming.
We've been laying the foundation for this presentation for some time, and so as part of our planning, one of the things that we wanna keep council up to date on are these items that are gonna be larger items inside of the FY25 budget. And then, as we've talked about before, these are replacement items that we have to keep in our forefront. So, with that...
Thank you, Mr. Ray, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing Chief Prokopio, our chief of operations, to sit before you tonight and discuss the potential replacement of our self-contained breathing apparatus in FY25. This is something that we've had on our radar in our department, and we've discussed over the past couple years. And we've been looking at four things when it comes to this critical piece of safety equipment. It's the mileage that we put on them on a day-in and day-out basis. It's utilized all the time for our health and safety. The warranty factor of it, the warranties fixing to expire on this piece of equipment. Also, the technology upgrades that come along with something like this. And then the NFPA standards, the National Fire Protection Association standards that change periodically when it comes to this equipment. Like I said, this critical piece of safety equipment is what we use for firefighting, hazmat, confined space, smoke investigations, alarm calls, going into just anything that we don't know what we're walking into. We utilize this on a day-in and day-out basis for the health and safety of our personnel. So, with that, I'll turn it to Chief Prokopio.
Alright. Thank you. So, we purchased our current SCBA's back in July of 2014 with a 10-year warranty period. We knew that going in, and that we would, you know, kind of have a potential of needing to replace them around the 10-year mark. They are not expired, however, our warranty period is running out in July of 2024. Our current cost, if we were to have to pay for those warranty repairs, would be between $20,000 and $50,000 a year. So, we have been saving quite a bit of money. So, these are the reasons that the replacement is needed. Obviously, the expiration of the warranty and the costs that's associated with that. The new NFPA standard in 2024, while we don't know exactly what that is going to entail, we do know that they're going to standardize the pass device alarm so that no matter what manufacturer, the sound will be the same. So, if we're responding with multiple different agencies, we hear that sound, we're gonna know that that's a down firefighter that needs our assistance. Another part of the standard is that the heads-up display, the colors will be standardized in all of the air packs. So, no matter what manufacturer, it'll be standardized. Beyond that, we won't know until the new standard comes out what will be included with that. That standard was supposed to be updated this year, however, COVID slowed everything down, so we're anticipating the 2024. With these new air packs, instead of the 10-year warranty, we'll have a lifetime warranty. With that being said, that doesn't mean that we will never need to replace these SCBA's, but they will be able to last longer and afford us to be able to not have that cost coming out of our budget every year. There, like Chief Tomlin said, the upgraded technology. One of the features with the new air packs is our ability at command post to be able to monitor when somebody's pass alarm does go off, to know that a firefighter's in trouble, and who that person is, and also to monitor their air supply. So, we can see when they're getting low on air and maybe give them a reminder, hey, you probably need to get out of there, especially if you're kinda deep into the structure.
Probably less, sorry. When they're using them, how long, how much air do they have? Like, how long is it?
It depends on the fitness of the firefighter, but about 30 minutes is the average.
You get about 10 to 12 working minutes out of a bottle. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And another quick question. Each individual firefighter has one assigned to them, right? Is it fitted or...?
No. So, each firefighter has their own regulator and their own face piece, but each position on the apparatus has an air pack assigned to it. Yes, sir.
But each face piece is fitted and tested every year to make sure that they're getting the proper seal.
That's not the piece that goes out, though, right? Is that what...?
All of it does. Yes, sir. The mask, the regulators, the packs that you physically wear on your back, yes, sir.
The tanks have like a 10-year life on them. But, you know, if the connection's the same, the tanks can be placed, replaced independent.
Correct. Yes, we do have...
I know turnover's slowed down a lot, but what do you do if you say for instance, a firefighter leaves? What do you do with his mask?
The packs are assigned to seats on apparatus. Now, each individual, we took advantage of CARES Act funding to get them their own regulator so they weren't sharing regulators. So, when they leave, we take that regulator back, we decon it, clean it, and then reissue it to the next person.
With that, like you were kind of asking, the face pieces are recommended to be replaced at the 10-year mark. The cylinders are every 15 years. And then the air packs, like I said, they have, these new air packs will have a lifetime warranty. So, we're anticipating them lasting between 15 and 20 years. It just depends on our use and wear and tear and new standards that might come out in the meantime. I already spoke about the upgraded technology along with that. There's also a way to sound the evacuation on the pass device itself. So, if the incident commander needs to tell everybody to get out of the building, they can do it through the air pack now, or the person can self-initiate an evacuation. So, that's something that we don't have an opportunity to use right now. As far as decontamination, these new air packs, you can fully take them apart, take all the straps completely off of the harness, and so we can properly decon them and be able to get all those contaminants off after we're done with a fire. And then the standardization of equipment, the new air packs, the buddy breathing connection is gonna be standardized. So, no matter what manufacturer air pack, if we're responding with another volunteer department outside of our area, we'll be able to hook up to them rather than having to hook up to the connection at the back of the air pack, which is kinda hard to get to sometimes. So, that's another benefit. So, our request is to replace 84 SCBA's, 168 cylinders. That's because we, they recommend getting two cylinders per air pack. The mask would be 100, and that gives us for all of our current personnel with a few extras. If one were to break or something like that, we would have a couple extra on hand. And then the rapid intervention packs, that's what you see on the bumper there. That's what we carry in with us to be able to go in and rescue a down firefighter, give them some air without having to hook to our air pack and use our air. So, we're looking at a new version of that, which is more user-friendly and more compact and actually cheaper than the ones that we use right now.
Do you use that, too, if you have to go save someone?
Yes.
Use the same thing for that person?
Yes, sir.
Do you have to change up your mask if you're dealing with a pediatric child versus an adult?
So, there really isn't a pediatric version of a mask. We have a small and then a large.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would just try to get them out of the environment as quick as we could. So, here are the cost estimates. The current pricing, if we were to purchase them right now, is $928,373. If we did a staggered cylinder purchase, it's $829,582. And then the estimated price for 2024 is $1,016,545. And the reason we put the staggered cylinder purchase up there is because our current cylinders are still good for about five more years. So, we could delay that a little bit and do those kind of in a staggered method. But we would prefer to go ahead and replace all of our air packs at the same time so that they all are, have the same features. And the users...
Then we'd also keep them all under warranty, too.
Correct.
All of them.
Correct.
Yes. The warranty is the big, the big ticket item, because we'd be looking at a large maintenance cost every year.
You'll do the maintenance and the decon all locally, or do you have to send that somewhere?
We do the decon ourselves, but an outside company comes and does all the warranty repairs for us, and the flow testing and everything.
What about recharging?
We do that ourselves.
Does that equipment have to be replaced, too?
No, sir. Chief Tomlin was actually going to talk about that in just a second. Our current rescue has a cascade system on it and station three, and none of that equipment would need to be replaced or upgraded.
Have you ever ran into a situation where you were purchasing the equipment, and then that company, for whatever reason, is no longer making these apparatuses? So, now you have to go to another company, and because you're changing companies, now that new company apparatus is not adaptable to currently what you now have to have? So, now you have to outfit everything all over to accommodate this new company you're using?
So, with the Scott, they've been around for a number of years, and that was actually one of the reasons that we went from Interspiral to Scott back in 2014, was that it was getting very hard to find the parts to fix those air packs. And with upgrading to this new version of the air pack, we wouldn't have that issue. And they would provide all the parts as long as it's under warranty.
Any universal... I guess, are they mostly interoperable, or what?
So, these new air packs, the buddy breather, which is how we connect to each other to be able to breathe inside of an environment, they would be a universal connection where now it's Scott-specific. So, if another agency were to respond with us, we might not be able to hook up to them without using... There is a universal connection, it's just a little bit harder to get to. I'll go to the next slide.
As part of this, too, as well, we've looked at other funding options available. I know I've come to y'all in the past before with the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, the AFG grant. I was excited to find, I got an email in my inbox this afternoon, that they are looking to open the AFG grant in January, just the first beginning of next year, and looking to make awards in the summer or spring. But their emphasis is on firefighter health and safety, which an SCBA would qualify for. Details in the past, they haven't released those for this grant, but the details in the past, a city our size would be eligible to apply for up to $1 million with a 10% match if we were awarded this grant. Another good thing about it is, is New Bern Fire Department received this grant for the exact same thing a couple years ago, and we've already reached out to them, and they would be willing to assist us with this grant writing process. So, we're looking forward to this opportunity, especially it being a priority for FEMA. We feel very good about it. Also, with the vendor buyback, if other smaller departments, volunteer departments are looking to buy used air packs, we have a potential to sell them back to the vendor to get a price and savings on them as well. And another good thing, too, according to the grant, the down payment we'd have to make, if we made money or got money from these air packs, we could actually utilize it for that 10% portion of the grant. And then another thing, too, is the opportunity to sell them on gov deals as well, so we can possibly recoup some of the money with the older air packs.
Were you assuming any liability on selling some of these?
Mr. Bittner, I cannot answer that question.
We would be selling as is. Because buyer assumes risk, and there's a history, et cetera, et cetera. We make all that very clear.
Tail light warning.
No warranty.
Those types of sellbacks go back, go through you?
Well, we won't discuss it. This is the first I've heard of it.
Okay.
In more detail.
There's steps to that process, yes, sir.
Make sure our attorney's involved somewhere in that process.
It'll be my first vocal, yes.
Yeah, during our last purchase, the vendor actually purchased old air packs from us, so it was a credit towards that purchase.
Safest way, we'll try and pursue that.
Safe as well.
And then the additional savings as well is the infrastructure for the Scott air pack. And then the additional savings as well is the infrastructure for the Scott air packs is already in place. Like Chief Prokopio talked about, we already have the fill systems at a couple of our stations, and actually on our apparatus where we can fill these bottles and cylinders on-site. Also, our ladder truck is fit with the air system, it's already set up for Scott, so we wouldn't have to change any of that. We also have other stuff as well, supply to air systems for our confined space, our rescue packs and harnesses, that we wouldn't have to change any of that. It's still with the same brand, the same manufacturer, so it all remain the same. The fit testing equipment, like you asked about, the seal around the mask, we already have that in place. We utilize it every year to make sure everything fits. We already have that stuff, we've been using it, we're familiar with it, we're satisfied with it as well. There's a Scott discount from the manufacturer, depending on what you buy, we don't know what that is, but there's a potential for that as well. And then I wouldn't call this additional savings, we could probably spread out the cost over time with the staggered cylinder replacement. That way, we wouldn't have to test the cylinders every five years at one time. We could stagger that out and slowly replace it. So as they expire down the road, we can continue to stagger that replacement. So it's not a savings, it's just a way to kind of spread the cost out there. That's all we have, is there any questions?
So have we been spending money towards this the last 10 years, or not really, right? So I'm assuming you haven't really spent any money the last 10 years on this part of it?
Minimally for the level of testing, basically. But the warranty repairs have covered almost everything. There's a few things that get broken here and there that aren't miscued, so they don't cover that, but.
Is there instances like where there's a major, you know, fire or something where you can't reuse them at all, and you have to decommission them at the end, or has that ever happened, or?
Luckily, not at our department. Not to say that it couldn't happen.
I don't know if there's a protocol or if something happens where it can't ever be reused, or what.
We would judge that on a case-by-case basis, and then when we have them tested every year, they just look at it and go, you know, this, it's not going to make it anymore.
Gotcha.
Make sure you stay on top of that grant.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, as we go through the budget process, that's what we'll do. You will present this to the councils as a main focal point of our equipment replacement plan. So when you see the level of equipment from a staff angle, this is the highest priority. This is a life and safety item that we talk about with our team that would be ahead of vehicles, that would be ahead of computers, or tables, or any of these other items. Because without this, we can't send our firemen and women into any type of facility with the greatest level of confidence. So when we send this to you, we'll also send it with that guarantee that hopefully FEMA will come through with the process. It is a standard request that you see nationally every year. The fact that New Bern's had some success is awesome, and to be a neighbor, a neighboring partner, to see that, that we could piggyback off that, it would be great to have that, but you'll see it through the process that we'll still, depending on how the budget plays out, we'll still have that request to council with the caveat of, should we find alternate funding, very similar to the fire truck. If we could just happily find funding, then we'll use that. Should we not, then we'd ask council to appropriate those funds and let us move forward. We don't have an action request at this meeting, just to let you know?
You're absolutely right, it's a must-do, there's no way around that.
Yeah, and as Mr. Sosa said, the value of planning for your equipment replacement plan is, every year, as we mentioned last year, we can start allocating funds into our ERPs that would set those dollars aside. That's what the fund balance is as well. So unless we, unless we take sections of the fund balance off and start putting those over to another side, that's what we're doing with this 10-year process. So as DC Prokopio said, every year that we make it without doing a mass replacement, those funds are effectively saved, and they're saved in that unrestricted fund balance because we know we're going to spend that at some point in history, whether it's the 10-year point, or it's the 11, 12, 13-year point. So either way that you look at it, whether we earmark those funds year after year, they're still there for a reason. And fortunately, this is one of those reasons where they come up, and we've had a good nine-plus years with this equipment, and anything that we can utilize, we're going to utilize, but if we can't, we're not going to push that. I would tell you that we may, we may stretch out a vehicle for an extra 10,000 miles, but we're not stretching out a breathing apparatus for another year. We're going to bring that back because that's a priority for, not only for the city, but for our citizens to have that option.
I have a question for you, Mayor. What's the fulfillment time? Like, I know a truck doesn't come the day you order it, this may not either. Is there a length of time between placing an order and actually receiving the equipment?
So currently, there isn't a back order on them. Now, if we're waiting till July, that could change by then, but they aren't anticipating any delays currently.
I'd be curious, too, moving into, you know, the conversations with Scott, that since new standards are, you know, due to be birthed at any day, but we don't know exactly when that day will land. What happens if an order, you know, is there a way to deal with, okay, we want to place an order in, let's just say, March, and standards come out in May, what do we do now? Like, is there a way to have a provision in there so that the current standards will be met by the time our order is fulfilled? Or, I don't know how to finalize that, but that would be a concern on the timing, maybe just we don't want to order them right before the standards change if we can get to the most current standards same time.
Yeah, I'm sure if we knew when the standard was coming out, and we can wait a couple of months, then if there's an implication, may not be them.
How long does it take to get a determination from FEMA that we get the grant? Like, if we process, say, January, how long does that take?
They're forecasting right now they'll start making awards in the summer of '24, so that probably means the fall of '24.
Could be the winter of '24.
Is it one of those deals where if you had to pay for it, you know, and then get money back, can you do it that way, or is that not legal?
Typically, no, not with FEMA. Typically, it's not, it's a reimbursement, but it's not a reimbursement of something that you've already allocated funds towards. That's why we would, we would navigate the budget process accordingly so that even if we know that we're coming close to that date, we would request that council do not, does not appropriate funds, but we may bring it back once we hear determination. So it's a great point in terms of how you do these processes.
You know, to me, the date is not critical, what runs out is the warranty. Okay, so the equipment is still safe, and, you know, at current things. So, so you really don't have a drop dead, per se, other than having to pay for repairs on some of the masks or some of the breathing apparatus. So I think in this case, you've got a little bit of flexibility on when you place your order.
So the warranty, the warranty runs out, but what about the effective date, is there like a?
Like an expiration?
They don't have a shelf life, as long as they're, we'll need the tanks.
The expired warranty would not negatively impact our ISO rating?
Yes, sir.
So there's no downside of waiting out the FEMA grant, so.
Just whatever expenses you incur.
In the meantime, it really has to do with how much you pay out of pocket to pay for.
Exactly right. I mean, it, you know, because.
But, but we're obviously going to have to meet the new standards, so that's the time that we do it.
That's right.
And as typically your question, we were discussing the fire truck. He hasn't ordered a fire truck yet because, you know, the way, they may not reimburse us if we order it before we get the money. But if we get the money and then order it, that's a reimbursement of sorts, so.
Yeah, a lot of our warranties, Mayor, they're all the same. You think about our IT warranties, if we're using the software or even hardware, those warranties run out, and then we lose that ability to maintain the items. So therefore, we put our, we expose ourselves to larger replacement costs. In this scenario, based on what they are saying, then the safety may not be at risk. We just put ourselves at risk for additional costs that, as DC Prokopio says, maybe that's $25,000 to $30,000, $40,000 a year. If we don't have that, it could be a greater number as they age out. So we just need to be mindful of that, and that's why when we present it here, we want the council to be aware, even if we don't have that program in for that budget for the year, it's still going to be one of those items that should it not get funded, we want to bring that back, and we want to keep it at the forefront of your attention.
Would the plan be to do a buyback on some of that other stuff, on the old equipment?
Yes, sir, if it's available, yes, sir.
Would you keep some in reserve?
We wouldn't want to keep our old air packs that are under warranty anymore in reserve. In the current purchase, we have a few that would be in reserve so that if somebody goes away to like a week-long training or something like that, we have air packs available for them to do that, and we want them to use the air packs that we're currently using to go do the training so that when they get into the real life scenario, it's second nature for them.
It sounds like you've got a plan there, so I think, again, like I said, this is a gotta-do.
We'll continue to manage it, Mayor, and then we'll keep you updated on the process. I like the fact that we have the pricing options, just like we presented with the fire truck, that if you get that one-time upfront payment, then maybe there's a savings there. So I think very good job on the presentation, looking at the opportunities. If we can get the funding and make it a net zero, well, we're geniuses, right? That would be these two, the rest of us can piggyback off that. But the funding is a, it's a crapshoot year over year because there's so many people looking for this funding, and we just need to know that however we handle it, we'll manage it through that budget process. We'll keep you posted, Mayor.
Great, great presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have a one-city moment, or?
I do have a couple of things, Mayor. I will tell you, too, there was an opportunity for Ms. Adams to present a SCBA opportunity tonight, since she mentioned it in the last meeting, but Chief Tomlin didn't know if she could actually do that effectively for us, so we didn't put you through that, we just wanted to show you what we're talking about. We have a couple of one-city moments, Mayor. The first one coming up is the police trunk-or-treat. It's a very exciting event for us, just for the fact that trunk-or-treat's a new safe way for our kids to go out and have confidence in a controlled environment. Obviously, this youngster won the night because they had the. Well, look at the fail. That's actually the costume of some guy named Sammy Phillips, is what it was. I think he had that on, so it's very impressive. And so between our officers, that's Officer Reyes here, and then Corporal Phantom Miller there. So multiple awesome opportunities. Packed house this year, so to see the community coming out and to be in an environment that is safe is great. We also had Dr. Seuss.
What they're doing there goes a long ways.
Oh, it's beautiful. The National Night Out is one of our best events in the community as a whole. These events throughout the year are a value add. These are not actually members of our Police Department of Public Safety, these are community partners. So Dr. Seuss, thing one and thing two, these people come out as part of partners with our Police Department to go through this event, and the response from the community is incredible, and that's, that's what we look forward to every year. I know that Chief Yonero's team is excited when they go through the planning, and as you can tell, Phantom Miller couldn't be happier handing out candy to the youngsters.
Sergeant Patrick, that's Sergeant Patrick.
Oh, man, look, I've done missed a name, so.
It's all right.
It's a tough day, thanks, Chief. So you get these, you get this turnout, that's excellent, and so as we come up for our next events, I think it's going to get bigger and better because this is how we engage with our community there. This one also equally is exciting. For anybody that likes the Halloween decorating contest, you're going to see that, I believe, this is our third-place winner. This is 129 Durbin Lane. Awesome decoration. This is our second-place winner, might be a little disappointed, this is 202 Sands Court. And then, there you go, this is our first-place winner, 105 Stagecoach Drive. So they're going to be recognized at the upcoming, at the December Environmental Appearance Committee meeting. This is just an opportunity to celebrate the community people that are doing something. I say for our kids and for the activity, there's a lot of properties that were decorated this Halloween, and so for the kids going out trick-or-treating, it's a fantastic event for Environmental Appearance Committee to recognize. What they do is they post these on Facebook, and they do a poll, and these were our winners. There were four or five others that could have won just as easily. I think total, we had 12 entries, official entries, but if you drove around on Halloween or anytime before or after, you would see a number of properties that were incredible. So that's our one-city moment, Mayor. My last comment, I will say, we don't have that one for tonight. As our last comment for tonight, Mayor, is we did have an election, and the three incumbents that are sitting here tonight were reelected, and so I say congratulations to each of you for being reelected. You know, from our staff perspective, Mayor, from a citizen perspective, our goal is to make sure we're providing that service, and to have individuals that want to run for office is a value add for our community. This is something that we typically don't recognize, the council and the mayor, for what you do each and every day, for how we're making things move, but just like with these two items tonight, you lay that policy groundwork for how we're able to move forward. This year's budget, you're going to see a lot of challenges with what we're trying to do, big-picture items. So for you three that chose to run again and to be successfully elected, thank you for welcoming that challenge. Any of you could have bowed out and said, that's enough, but you chose to stay with us, so thank you so much.
You're stuck with us.
Mayor, that was my comment. As Mr. Sosa said that, I did not nod or respond. That's all, Mayor.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in bar? All those opposed?